Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. It's April 12th, 2021. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate, inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. Next, we will move on to any public participation? Is there any public participation? The public is invited to address the board and superintendent on any matter relating to the White Plains Public Schools. Please limit your statements to three minutes. Please also respect the privacy and dignity of all individuals, whether students, faculty, administrators, or others. The administration would be happy to address privately any school-related matters of a more personal nature. Any public participation, please raise your hand.
Mrs. Kostic would like to address the board?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Hi, Dr. Rika and everyone on the board. I just wanted to say how grateful we are, the Kostic family, and I can probably speak for every parent in White Plains, how grateful we are that schools are starting again on a full-time basis. And I can speak for myself and say that I've seen such a transformation in my youngest daughter's Catherine's schoolwork and attention and engagement and all of that. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for all your hard work through this pandemic. It's been such a year, and White Plains has done an amazing job. And we're just so grateful to be living in this community and have the wonderful teachers at Ridgway. So thank you so much. And I have two grateful girls here. They'll just say a really quick hi. Just wave hello.
Hi, girls.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rika, and everyone at Ridgway and everyone on the board.
Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Kostic.
Thank you so much for your kind words. Deeply appreciated. Any more public participation? I see nothing else in the chat. I don't see any hands raised. Okay, so we're good to go on. Next, next, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, just in case, certainly we could do it at the end of the meeting too, just if there was any announcements by the board members, if anyone wanted to.
Oh, yes, yes.
I attended some things related to Eastview, the fifth grade orientation, and the Eastview Curriculum Night, state testing education webinar, middle school PTA meeting, PTA council meeting. I wanted to particularly mention the Westchester Children's Association Breakfast, which I was pleased to attend. And we had Congressman Jamal Bowman, who was there, as well as Lester Young. And they really talked about equity and excellence going hand in hand, you know, social-emotional learning, a holistic approach to education, power of relationships, really guidance and support for all students, sort of a continuum of services that wrapped around as part of the community, that education was not a silo. And the other interesting thing was Lester Young really mentioned that we need to challenge the way schools are funded, and, you know, the property tax issues and the inequities that it causes. The other thing I wanted to mention was the National Safe School Reopening Seminar, which was conducted by the U.S. Department of Education and the CDC. It's just, it was really interesting to listen to that. It's been a few weeks already, but I really felt like White Plains was so ahead of the curve when we listened to some of the recommendations that were being made. We were already doing all those things. So I thought that was very interesting as well.
Thank you. I have just a few things. I was able to attend the Code of Conduct meeting. Some of us went to the reopening meeting, and as you all know, we've achieved that goal, but we're still meeting, as well as some went to the Equity meeting. I also went to the Operations reopening meeting, just really to see how things are going operationally in our schools and how we're preparing for our students to come back. Do we have any other announcements from board members?
No, I'd like to share that. My third and fifth grader went back to school today full-time for five days. My seventh grader started last week, and they are super excited to be back. And I know, you know, there's still a risk, and I think we all need to be cognizant of that and be aware that, you know, we still are using our mitigation strategies and our masks and our social distancing, but they are very excited and they are very exhausted this evening, which is also very good. My seventh grader is getting the opportunity to hear Jason Reynolds, an author that writes a lot of YA books and some really great literature this week. And I think the high school had an opportunity last week to hear from him. So that's exciting, and I'm really excited tonight to hear the Equity presentation. I know we're going to hear from some of the folks that have been involved in that, so I'm looking forward to that.
I was unable to do a tour of Highlands and see that all of the mitigation that's gone on there, and it's near and dear to my heart as a doctor in the community, that it was as safe as any place could possibly be in terms of letting our students in, our faculty and our staff, all staff in. I can't imagine taking more care than I was, I've seen in our schools.
And I.
Yeah, I was in Eastview, same thing.
I dropped in today to MAS to say congratulations to a really cool guy, Rob Janowitz. And I saw Rob Spatafino and spent some time in there, and the energy in the school was just, the kids, you know, are you happy to be back in school, and they're cheering, and the energy in the staff, and it's just, that's where everybody wants to be, and it's just, we can do it safely. It's a wonderful thing. And yeah, it was great there.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
If I could just jump in real fast, again, very exciting to see everyone back in school today and all the smiling faces. And I know people are going to be tired in the morning, but that's it. We want, we want, we're going to work the body and the mind. Great to see the different layers of mitigation that the school district has put into place. And always interesting to see what the state does on a Friday afternoon when they provided more guidance this past Friday. And I know Dr. Rika was going to get into that a little bit more, a simple 30-page guidance document that the state put out there. So I'm joking a little bit, but it's important. I spent some time, I don't know if there was a meeting between, a full board meeting in between the time I went to the Special Education Coffee. It was Zoom, and it was really great to see that and to see the parents participate and really have a voice, and it was great to be a part of that. I happen to have a senior in high school, so it's an exciting time of the year, and there's a lot of things going on. We also have our sports which are going on, and it's very exciting. You know, March, March and April are big times for our college students, or going to college students. There's a lot of joy and there's some heartbreak out there. So it's a year and a time of the year that's very, that's great for some and not so great for others. And I know we're always mindful of that, but I know they're going through tough times, and I know they're going to do great things, and we're going to be able to see that in June. And Dr. Richard is going to talk a little bit more about the graduation, and we're voting on some of that tonight. So that's very exciting. I know we've got state testing information that's coming out. Certainly, Mr. Janowitz, congratulations. And we have our, as a parent, I had the opportunity to go to the Swimming Seniors event. So it was kind of nice to be able to go to one sporting event. That's all we were allowed to go to, and that was great. It was the oddest sporting event I've ever gone to, where we're all seated six feet apart. And we made it work, though. I'd do it again if they'd let me, no matter how odd it was. It was really great to do that. And, you know, this, again, can't do that, the video sporting events. If there's, if there's a good thing that's come out of, there's going to be many good things that have come out of this COVID issue, certainly being able to watch sports and some other activities as parents on video when you can't always make it there in person is one of those really nice things. And I think that's something that's been a real diamond that's come out of this. Saying the Pledge of Allegiance on Zoom, I think that's one of those things that I'm really happy that we're not going to have to do moving forward when we're meeting in public, because I don't know if we can get the timing right there. But anyway. Thank you, and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Now, Dr. Rika, to your report.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Thanks to everybody for being here this evening with us and certainly for those in our community who are celebrating. We all wish you a happy Ramadan and filled with love and peace. We, I am doing my very best to be stoic and professional and contain my excitement. But today was a really, really great day personally for me in just finally getting to the place that we wanted to be and welcoming back our children. Now, of course, not every child returned today. We still have children that are taking advantage of remote. But certainly, the vast majority of our children did return in full, and I echo everything you all said. It was wonderful and wonderful to see them and to have the buildings come alive again. Had the opportunity today to tour White Plains High School, and thanks so much, Principal Martinez and Ms. Hall and everybody at the high school with Leader Andres Stewart-Cousins. And it was great to show the leader all of the work that went into getting us to where we are today, and she was very impressed. And she told me that she was going to be sharing what she learned today also with other school districts in her travels. So that was really great. Tomorrow, we're going to be welcoming the Chair of the Education Committee, Senator Shelley Mayer. We're going to visit Eastview. And on Wednesday, our friend and the guy who's really been side by side with me since March, George Latimer, is going to be visiting Church Street with me on Wednesday. And, you know, it's important, I think, to welcome our elected officials to be able to visit because they really did work very, very hard with us behind the scenes to get us where we needed to be. A lot of the sausage-making, if you will, right, the policy work and the negotiations related to policy and getting guidance and updates and all of these things, you know, it was a lot. And I'm just happy that we're able to share with them and allow them to see the kiddos and just, you know, enjoy the fact that we were able to accomplish what we wanted to accomplish. This evening, we have some great updates for you, one of which I'm really excited about, of course, is the District Equity Committee. And in just a moment, I will turn it over. We do have with us members of the committee this evening, and thank you all for attending. We also have our facilitator, the fabulous Natalie Zwerger, who's here with us. And of course, Natalie is from NYU and has been working with us for a couple of years now and getting us to where we are this evening. And I'm sure they'll talk more about this. It couldn't have happened, I think, at a better time, and you made mention of it earlier. But the Regents did today release an update and really a memo indicating their commitment to the work of reframing the way in which we look at schools and how we go about instruction all throughout the state of New York with a focus on equity, with the focus on making sure that all of our children are seeing themselves in what they learn, in who they work with, in their experiences, regardless of where they hail from, regardless of what their background is, ability or challenges, all of those things. And, you know, it really is an apropos time for that to come out in that tonight we'll be talking about that work. But first, I'm going to share my screen with you, if you don't mind. The Comeback. There are two videos that I need to share with you. Because even they're short, but please, please, just sit back and enjoy. The first is one that we developed here in the district, and thanks to Mr. Shepherd and everybody who participated in that. And the second is from one of our very, very talented students. So I'll start out with the Comeback video.
Good morning, friends.
Good morning.
Are you ready to be back full-time?
Yeah.
All right, let's make it the best day of learning. Let's go.
Have a good day.
Good morning.
Also having a great breakfast.
I feel like it's really important for me to be back because it motivates me every morning to be able to wake up and because it's an adventure every day.
Good morning. Welcome back. It's good to see you.
I think that that was really the highlight of the day, to just have them be so happy to be back.
We're really excited that they're able to get back into the school with their friends and their teachers. It's been really hard with them home.
They need it so badly, and so do we as parents.
Biggest difference is last year, students didn't have an option.
Online, it really wasn't working. It was working, but it's just not as much.
Without a doubt, the greatest difference is there's nothing like being in school.
I really appreciate that school. It's a lot better coming in than doing Zoom.
I'm so excited to have everyone back together. It'll feel like school again. I've missed the noise. I've missed the kids.
Being alone with your computer or iPad in like your room or just in your house, it can feel really lonely.
Having the extra kids in was fantastic, and we're really looking forward to welcoming in the rest of them.
You can make new friends here with like all the different elementary schools that you're meeting for the first time this year.
How has it been being back in school five days a week?
Good.
Why so good?
Because I got to see my friends again.
Absolutely. Great job.
Be happy, be happy, because we're all here together today.
What'd you think?
It was wonderful.
Yeah, really, really cute. The next one is a video that was put together by one of our amazingly talented Tigers. She's at Eastview. Just sit back and enjoy. And for all of you Frozen fans, I think you'll really, really like this one.
It's school day. It's a school day. The schools are open. What to decide? Do I go in or do I hide? This new anxiety is so not cool. One year, I've been stuck in my room, doing my classes all on Zoom, but now they will be opening up the school. They'll be actual, real-life people. It'll be totally strange. But wow, I'm not so ready for this change. Because for the first time in a year, there'll be people all around. For the first time in a year, I'll be surrounded by a crowd. Don't know if I'm excited or anxious, maybe a bit of both. Because for the first time in a year, I won't be remote. I can't wait to see everyone. Wait, do I have to see everyone? In class, imagine me masked and all, keeping my distance in the hall, sitting behind a plastic barrier. What about lunch without a mask? Can I go outside? Should I ask? I really thought this would be easier. But then I'll finally see my friends, which makes it all worthwhile. If it means that I can see them smile. For the first time in a year, there'll be recess. They'll be fun. For the first time in a year, I could go hang out with someone. And I know it is totally crazy to think that COVID's gone. But for the first time in a year, at least I'll see someone. Don't go back in. Stay in your room. You can be safe and go to class on Zoom. On mute, in sweats, can stay in bed. Because for school, you will need to get dressed. But it's only for this year. It's only for this year. I cannot live in fear. I cannot live in fear. I'm not ready to go back out there. For the first time in a year.
Don't go back in. Stay in your room.
Your room might be at an end.
You can be safe and go to class on Zoom.
A chance to change my lonely world.
Stay home.
A chance to see my friends.
Stay home. Just wait. No rush to go.
I know you'll have to be careful, so all for all for us. Because for the first time in a year, for the first time in a year, I might go to school.
You've got to admit, Miss Shuff is talented, very, very talented. And if you have a frozen household like mine where you hear that song constantly because your kids are watching that movie 24/7, as soon as I saw that, I said, wow, that's amazing. She did a really, really great job. And, you know, I think for many of our children, they felt a lot like that. And I just thought that was so neat that she put that together on her own. And I did ask for permission to be able to share it, so you can share it too. I think it should be all over everywhere. Everybody should be watching that. I think it's fantastic. But we still have to recognize that even though we've come a long way, as Rosemary mentioned, our reopening committee's work is not done. We need to continue to monitor, obviously, the levels of COVID-19 in our, in our community and also in our region. We also need to continue to refine all of the health safety procedures and mitigation strategies that we have in place. And that's going to be ongoing all throughout the remainder of this year and maybe even into next year. We just want to make sure that we have everything in place for our kids so that everybody can be as safe as possible. Vigilance, monitoring, testing, and communicating cannot be understated. I think it's served us very, very well in terms of communicating with everyone in our community about what we absolutely need everybody to do so that we can be successful. So you'll see it's highlighted. If you or somebody at home isn't feeling well, stay home and contact your physician. If you're a seasonal allergy sufferer and you feel like you're really, really dealing with allergies right now, you have to make sure that it's in fact allergies and not COVID-19. The last thing any of us wants to do is make a mistake, come to school sick, and then end up in a contact tracing, isolation, and quarantine situation. So please continue to be vigilant and take care of yourselves and make sure that we're only coming to school and work when we're well. And that's something we'll continue to remind everybody about. You saw, hopefully, everybody received on Sunday evening, a reminder. You will get those reminders every single Sunday for the remainder of the academic year. We just want to make sure that everybody is taking all the appropriate precautions to keep everybody safe. And most importantly, of course, keep everybody safe and our schools fully open. So thank you all in advance for that. I also would like to just congratulate and recognize a few of our Tigers right here. Lauren did a fantastic job, and she's a senior at White Plains High School, and she's a science research student. She did a great job. She won third place in biomedical sciences. I can't even tell you what her project was. I know it had something to do with retinas, right, doc? I'm looking at Dr. Stein right now because she can definitely speak that language.
Absolutely. No, this is an amazing project.
Yeah, really, really great. And congratulations to Senior Violet Hamlin as well. She did a fantastic job, and she was the Deputy Speaker of the Assembly for the YMCA Youth and Government Program, and she won the Clement Durant Scholarship Award. And then a big congratulations to our senior, one of our seniors, Sebastian Garibaldi. Sebastian won the state championship this year in wrestling. It's one of the first state champions we've had in quite some time. It's a little different this year because obviously, in the state of New York, we weren't able to run the traditional tournament. But however, Sebastian, even despite not having a traditional wrestling season this year, went out, competed, and won. Congratulations to Sebastian and to all of our wrestlers and student athletes and who participated and did a great job. Very, very proud of everybody. The next portion of my superintendent's report is one that I'm really excited about. I'd like to take a moment to thank Natalie Zwerger for being with us this evening. Hi, Natalie.
Good evening, y'all. Good to be here.
Thank you so much. And Natalie and Dr. Hand and members of our committee will be giving an update to the Board of Education on the hard work of the Equity Committee. We're very proud of this work. I will be happy to serve as clicking the slides. So you just let me know when you want the slides to click, and I'll click away. Sound good?
Sounds perfect. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. So really, the district-wide Equity Team began its work back in 2019 in earnest. And essentially, what we were looking to do is always, in the same spirit and fashion that we approach everything in our district, is continuously improve. But this continuous improvement is very targeted. We want to make sure that our district provides everything for everyone we possibly can and more, that we reduce any type of barriers that may be in place, that even if they're barriers that were unintentional or just sort of traditional barriers that exist, we want to be able to remove them to provide our children as much access and opportunity as humanly possible. And that's the work of the Equity Team. So looking at everything that our children experience within our school district, auditing all of our curriculum, our resources, our policies, and making sure that our practices are free and as much as possible from bias, both overt and covert. And Natalie, would you like to start us off?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Dr. Rika, and good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I am the Director of the Center for Strategic Solutions down at the NYU Metropolitan Center for Research on Equity and the Transformation of Schools. We'll quiz all board trustees on the title at the end. It's a word salad, but we're a national equity and racial justice center that has the privilege of doing this work around the country with schools and districts and organizations that are looking to move beyond just a theoretical commitment to better serving our children, to one where we operationalize the commitment, which seems to get more challenging every day that we exist in this country, in this world, given the current sociopolitical climate, given what you open up your phones to in terms of news every day. And so I truly believe there is no more important work than this work to be doing in this moment. And it has been my absolute pleasure to work with White Plains for the past couple of years, getting to know administrators, board members, families, teachers, staff, and most importantly, amazing groups of students who served on our Equity Team last year and who served this year. And so first, just a shout out to all the folks on our district-wide team who are here tonight. This work is really just me facilitating your brilliance. And so that privilege is one that I accept wholeheartedly, and I'm very excited to share some of what y'all have come up with tonight. I think just setting the context, and we talked a little bit about what the Board of Regents and Chancellor Lester Young came out with today. But the commitment from New York State has been a longer standing even than that announcement. So in 2019, the New York State Department of Education adopted a framework for culturally responsive and sustaining education, which is an imperative across all school districts in our state. More recently, last year in 2020, the New York State School Board Association put out sample policy language for equity and inclusion policies. And so part of what a subset of this district-wide team has been working on is a draft equity and inclusion policy for your review, which, you know, also feels like an imperative in this type of work, given these are policy, practice, and relational changes that need to happen. So this district-wide group of stakeholders has been working together since last year with some interruptions to the schedule because of the pandemic. And so where we have landed is exploring some of the research together, coming up with six top areas, and the committee members voted on these areas. The committee members reviewed best practices across local and national districts and really did a lot of critical self-reflection to ask questions about how we are individually situated to be a part of a conversation about equity, racial justice, and inclusivity, how we enter. And that work has resulted in what you all will see tonight. And I think Dr. Hand and I will just kind of bounce back and forth and offer you. and offer you very briefly a sample of those six areas. And then you'll have the awesome opportunity to hear from a couple of our district Equity Team members a little bit about their experience, but also they'll just pick up on anything that we forgot to mention as a part of this process.
So in a district our size, it's important to be systematic when we're, when we're working on, on, on this type of, you know, broad-based, in-depth study of what we're, of, of equity. So I, I had notes down, but Natalie's talking right off the top of her head. So I just wanted to say that we started with the administrative retreat in the summer of 2019. And we had invited our entire administrative team. That included a series of meetings and then ongoing coaching and consultation. There was a subcommittee of the district Equity Team that worked on an equity policy that were, that will be reviewed by the Board of Education. And it's a summary of the commitment of the work to equity and inclusion. As part of the new teacher orientation, all incoming teachers had a session with Dr. Zwerger, as well as an introductory session of CEED, which is Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity, which is a course that's offered by our teachers and is also, we also run a student version of CEED as well. It's a very powerful experience for both adults and for students. Both courses are facilitated by our faculty members, Wendy Dale, Catalina Restrepo and Imani Bowling, who recently retired. In addition, our staff development center and our teacher center focused on professional learning opportunities with an equity lens. And this was especially important for teaching in a hybrid learning environment. Along with the district-level committee, each of our buildings has established building-level equity committees. And another recent endeavor was to review our code of conduct and make revisions using an equity lens. And Deborah Islegarden facilitated that committee work with the support of Dr. Zwerger.
And I don't know if it was you, Dr. Rika, who specifically curated the images for these slides. You can take credit for it, even if you didn't.
I did. Wait, wait, I totally did.
I didn't know. There's a real intentionality with these images. And so the, the definition that you see here is the definition of equity from the New York State CRSC framework. And it's, you know, super tiny to take a look at, I'm sharing your screens. But the, the point is equity work cannot be aspirational. So districts cannot just put out their bold and beautiful mission statements and plans that have no backing, right? The rubber hits the road. The question becomes, how do our young people palpably feel a change, given the commitment of a school district to all of the bullet points that you see there? And so I really feel like this moment is sort of like the kickoff, the coming out party to declare out loud, right? There's been foundation built, but now is the moment in time where it really matters for us to start asking questions about when and how, and how deeply will young people in White Plains palpably feel the impact of the work in each of these areas? And so the, the district-wide team came up with these six areas in terms of just summary of the recommendation points. What I'll tell you as someone who does this work around the country and with almost 20 districts in the Westchester area, these six areas are some of the more calculated and palpable ones that often come up with community members and young people and leaders at the table engaged in this dialogue. So you probably could predict that curriculum and professional development would be at the forefront of some of these recommendations. But you'll also see that climate consciousness, this awareness of the impact of school climate and how not just students, but the staff who serve students, families who exist in our community and building spaces are feeling included, feel themselves, see themselves wholly represented as they move about the spaces. How are they affirmed? Climate consciousness and communication were also forefronted for the district-wide Equity Team. And rounding out the six were also parent and guardian engagement, which, you know, can't be surprising, parents and family members as partners in this work. There is an entire section in the New York State CRSC framework for each stakeholder group, including families and community. How can each of us be responsible for crafting these equitable and racially just spaces? And then finally, and most importantly, and it's the last one we'll go through tonight, but probably the most important one that has through lines in each of the other areas, is student equity leader development. We are here to leverage the brilliance and the joy and the criticality of our young people, in the words of Dr. Goldie Mohammed. And so this district Equity Team forefronted the brilliance of young people, but also their perspective in navigating issues that we as adults tend to complicate and make a lot more complex than they actually are. And so, you know, Dr. Hand and I will just walk you through each of these recommendation areas very briefly to give you a sense, but that's the, the summary of each of them in total.
All right. Thank you, Natalie. So the climate consciousness, that's ensuring that our community is safe, welcoming, inclusive, equitable and affirming for all of our students and adults, and to directly address any inequities that are currently present or that may arise, and holding each other accountable for this work. Along with rigorous academics, our students need social emotional skills to connect with diverse members of the community that they will learn and work with. And this is currently, but also as they move forward in life. All members of our community need to feel included, valued and supported. And then some suggested actions in this area would be community climate survey, to administer a survey to our entire community, including students and families and teachers and administrators, and community events related to equity, reflecting, learning and taking action together in the service of all members of our community.
And the one thing I'll say as we go through each of these, although we're talking about them as if they're six separate lanes, we are all on the same highway. And so each of these recommendations is in conversation with each other. So when I talk about communication, you'll hear echoes of some of these other areas. In order for the White Plains City School District to fulfill its mission and vision of having its students contribute to a diverse and dynamic world, we must foster equity and inclusivity that will prepare our children to be, to collaborate with members within our community as well as those in the global community. And part of what the district Equity Team thought about in terms of communication was really twofold. So it was equity in communication efforts, but also communicating about equity, right? And so what does it mean to speak publicly about this work? What does it mean to be vulnerable and talk about the challenges in this work? Because I, I say this all the time to school boards. If you have a district that feels like this work is easy, that feels like they have it down, you have a district that is lying to itself. This work is hard. This work gets harder every day. And, and we should feel that. And part of our reflection is to acknowledge that this is a journey and not a destination. And so communication overall is the invitation from the district-wide Equity Team to first do an overall assessment of communication practices in White Plains to get the pulse on things that are working really well and things that are not, and do that through an equity lens. So one that unpacks stereotype and biases and really challenges us to ask tough questions about who has access to information and who doesn't, and why that matters, and why that has real, you know, deep historical roots and entanglements in terms of what it means to be a community member here.
For curriculum and instruction, affirming cultural identities of our students, fostering positive academic outcomes for all students, developing students' abilities to connect across lines of differences. Curriculum should have windows. And a window would be something that allows a student to view somebody else's experiences as well as mirrors, which reflect their own culture and their own experiences and make them feel included. So I think that in terms of embarking on a review of our curriculum, again, through that lens of equity, so that it's inclusive, rigorous, reflective of our students, relevant and connected to current realities in the world around us, and grounded within historical context would be important work for us. And teachers need support in implementing pedagogical practices in the classroom that are culturally responsive. And the curriculum needs to be developed in the same way. So we need to be able to, to be ready to teach through multiple perspectives and to elevate the voices of those who are historically marginalized and empower our students to be agents of social change and cultivate critical thinking. So it's really creating a thinking curriculum with multiple perspectives. And that work has already started. So we are, you know, we're, we're, we're in, we're, we've already started to embark on, on making this happen. But there's a lot of work to do.
You know, I, I wish that I could easily tell districts, just use this curriculum and, you know, we'll be as culturally responsive as we want to be. And it just doesn't work that way, right? If, if the educators who are implementing that curriculum haven't undergone the mindset shift that we know are necessary to really understand how, who we are in forms, how we teach. And so you'll hear echoes of those connections when we talk about professional learning in a moment. Parent and guardian engagement can't be underscored as an imperative in this work. Knowing that our community demographics change over time, knowing that, you know, political affiliations impact this work and the trajectory of it, particularly in fraught times as a country. And so we need parents and families as partners at this table, but also to really hold us accountable. So part of what Dr. Hand and I are doing is kind of shifting between reading the actual language that the district Equity Team wrote and then giving you a little summary because their language is really beautiful. Family involvement in this initiative will be prioritized and nurtured by the district through reciprocal family, district commitment to equitable practices and calling out circumstances that are inconsistent with our mission of an equity-focused community. And that's particularly sage, right? It's acknowledging the, the brilliance and the capacity that exists within our community and then also asking them to hold us accountable, that reciprocal relationship. So how are we accessing some of the knowledge that exists, but also welcoming families into conversations that might not necessarily be happening around every dinner table? And why does that matter in terms of the children who we serve? So we'll think about family membership playing a role on the building-level equity committees. And those committees are so important to really localize the conversations because we know that this type of work at the elementary level has to be very different than at the secondary level. And then what are the other opportunities? Community conversations, town halls, coffee talks, right? Ways to engage more of our community, to meet them where they're at, to think about language access issues, right? And ways that we can be a community that with some level of facility and comfort is speaking on issues of inequity and racial injustice when it comes up.
For professional development, we need to focus on inclusivity and cultural awareness and social justice for all of our teachers and teaching staff. We need to ensure that the staff are engaged in self-reflection of these practices too. Again, with that equity lens. The cultural responsive, sustainable educational framework, anti-bias education, anti-racism education will all be part of this work. And then also to articulate training of a crosswalk between the culturally responsive, sustainable principles and the Danielson model. The Danielson model is the rubric that we use to, to observe teachers with. And then high-quality training, high-quality targeted training for all of our administrators and evaluators on the Danielson model with that connection to the CRS. And then finally, review, revise and enhance our staff recruitment, our hiring, our onboarding, retention and leadership development practices. Again, you know, we have work to do, but we're already, we're already making gains in those areas.
So I told you all this one was going to be last, but it might be the most important. And I stand by that when we think about our student equity leaders and forefronting young people at the, the front of this work as our anchors, essentially, if you will. So the transformative power of student voices and experiences will be leveraged as an analytical tool and as an essential driver for the district's commitment to equity and social justice. I feel like we could just sit with that sentence for a while and unpack what that means for us. There is real power in asking questions about what equity means in our schools and making sure we don't conflate equity with equality and making sure that we unpack power dynamics and proximity to power from a socioeconomic stance, from the stance of positional power and proximity to it. And asking real questions about how often are young people experience joy in their learning? How often they feel brilliant? And I, just having spent a limited amount of time with a small section of your students, I have palpably felt the ways that their brilliance can be leveraged and must be leveraged in even deeper ways than what we are doing in this particular moment. What they have reflected back to us is that there are, they're personal testimonies of inequity. There are personal testimonies of racism and, and what it means in this particular moment when the sociopolitical climate finds its way into our educational spaces, whether we invite it or not. And so the young people talked a lot about reporting mechanisms. They talked about opportunities for them to host platforms like teach-ins, to be able to speak to administrators about what it means to be welcomed and affirmed in spaces and where they don't have that feeling, how we could transform it. So I really see our students as guides and also just the center of this work. We will follow their lead because frankly, they do a much better job navigating complex and uncomfortable issues than we as adults ever will. So we have this phenomenal opportunity to hear from a couple of our district Equity Team members who are here tonight to both, and that's a picture from one of our initial sessions, which feels like a lifetime ago when we were in person. You see the faces there of some of our folks. We're going to invite them to both share a little bit about their individual experience, just being a part of the community, but then emphasize anything that we missed for sure in the recommendations, anything that really stands out to them. And then of course, their hopes for White Plains as we really deepen this commitment. And so we're going to hear in this particular order, so I'll alert folks they know who's popping in first, from Dr. Natasha Freeman Mack, followed by Julia Rose Pareja, and then Becky Idelman. And finally, last but not least, Valerie Cadet Simkins, to share a little bit about their experience in this work.
I'll introduce myself just a little bit. I've been with the district for two years. I am an administrator in the district. The experience on the district Equity Committee has been amazing. It's been a true collaborative conversation across the building, with teachers, with students, with board members, with administrators. And it's just been amazing. And there's been so many aha moments with the young minds that we serve. Hearing from the students and how things affect them and what their view is of equity has been really revealing and telling. And those conversations have been absolutely imperative. What's also been unique and great about this work is the ability, and I, I believe Natalie spoke to a little bit, we've all been on the same highway. There are so many levels of consistency throughout the recommendations. We were able to, on the DET, to move between groups from the Climate Committee to the Curriculum, to the PD, those subcommittees we created within. So we were allowed to really, you know, listen and hear so many different dynamics about the district and share, you know, what we felt was imperative and important to include. The collaborative process, it was really and truly and honestly quite effective when we examined code of conduct and looked at our equity policy and what we wanted to create and understand there. So I believe the hope is to continue the focus as we transition to focusing on our building-level equity communities. And the hope would be to begin to include all aspects across the district, custodians, food service workers, bus drivers, CSEA personnel, but to, to really have that conversation and that understanding to best serve those young minds that, you know, run around us all day long, that sit in front of us and that we, you know, look to inspire, to allow to soar. And I, I really thank everyone for the opportunity. Thank you.
I'm Julia Rose Pareja. This is my second year as a Spanish low teacher at Highlands. But I'm also actually a graduate of the White Plains School System. So my, my Tiger pride runs deep and it's been really important for me. I've, I've felt very fortunate to be involved in the DET since last year. And, you know, some of the issues that we've been discussing are issues that I remember talking about ever since I was in, in high school. And it's been a little while since I graduated. So it's very important. And I think that just really speaks to the importance and the urgency of this work. I have been mainly serving on the Student Equity Leaders Subcommittee. And I, it's been so important for me because, of course, the purpose of this work, like Natalie said, is really to benefit our students. And so to me, student voices is absolutely, absolutely essential to this conversation. Student voice has also been essential to the work that we did on the Subcommittee. And our students had a very active role in developing this framework and our recommendations. And, you know, it, again, it just speaks to, to the brilliance of, of our kids and the fact that we need to take a step back and, and let them take the lead because they know what they're doing. So my main hope is to make sure that the White Plains School System is a supportive and enriching environment for all community members. and for our students to become more involved as they enhance their agency as the important stakeholders that they are. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present tonight.
I am Rebecca, or Becky Idleman. I am a second-year earth science teacher at Highlands. Second and a half, I suppose. And I teach predominantly our L population. I've been dedicated to this equity work for a while, but I'm so very grateful to have joined in September with the District Equity Team. I'm also very fortunate to be serving on the Code of Conduct and the policy committees. It has given me a really wonderful insight into all of the wonderful stakeholders that are participants in this work, and that includes students. I think if we focus our work around what we did in one of our Code of Conduct meetings, which is grounding every decision that we make around the beliefs that we have in students, we can be really inspired to do wonderful things for our students, and they can be inspired to do wonderful things for themselves. Speaking to Julia's mention of agency, I think that's exactly the goal. And through a restorative lens, so I'm really excited moving forward that the district has dedicated itself to this equity work beyond just Natalie's tenure with us. But in its future, I hope to see as much fidelity as we've put forth so far continued in the future and that we maintain a restorative approach to building culture in the buildings and our response to situations of harm in the building to continue to give students voice and agency in their own educational career.
I guess it's my turn. My name is Valerie Cadet Simkins. I am in my sixth year as an assistant principal at the best school in White Plains, Highlands Middle School. And it's been my honor, my pleasure to serve as a member of the District Equity Team since 2019. When we first began meeting as a district equity team, I was inspired. I, I thought, what bravery to be in a room with stakeholders across all levels, from board members to cabinet members, teachers, TAs, students. You know, many people don't give that platform for this level of education and this level of conversation across all, you know, all the stakeholders of a of a district. And it was so important for us to be able to hear from one another. And, you know, I want to echo what was said about our student equity leaders. We all learned from the students in this space as much as we learned from what Natalie had come to present. And we need to be able to give more space and more more intentional spaces and opportunities for us to hear from all of our students. And that is one of the, that is one of the things I took from that space and and that I want to help build more strongly at Highlands. That translated into some significant building level work. We started our building level equity team, started kind of the seeds of that in the spring. We were all interrupted by COVID, as you know. But again, reinvigorated, it informed our summer reading. It informed what we did in October. We had a social justice week and and our students all read a text and watched the 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 film Just Mercy. We had a community panel with our mayor, our police chief, a local judge, board member Letizia, and are the head of the YWCA, right? So really starting to open and expand this conversation beyond just the four walls of our school. It's been wonderful for us to continue to meet as a policy committee. I'm also serving on the Code of Conduct Committee as an assistant principal. And though it's my sixth year, this is the first year that we're really talking about the the beliefs that ground our disciplinary practices, our our need for restorative practices to give students that space to better reflect on their actions, to give administrators the space to reflect on consequences versus learning experiences. So as we move forward, my hopes for the district are that we can move beyond the discomfort into action. Most conversations about race tend to be held with people who look just like us, if they're held at all. That's just societal, that's no one's fault. But we we started something very brave here, and I should hope that that momentum will continue across races, across classes, across across sections of our district. Because our students look like all of us, not any one or another. And our community is beautifully diverse in so many ways. And there's so much happening for our kids. They're watching the news, they're experiencing things in school. And they need a space to be able to better understand and see themselves and articulate themselves before we send them out to the world to make it better. So we owe it to them to get this right. This can't feel tangential when it's so central. And I am grateful for this opportunity to to meet with you as we embark on this journey together. Thank you.
Thank you to each of you for sharing your experiences and, you know, to the board. Just a small subset of of our community who has poured themselves emotionally and intellectually and critically into this work. And so, so much gratitude for all of the folks who are here tonight, who have been a part of of this district equity team. We do see this as just the beginning, not the end. So I'll give you a little sense of some of our next steps. The district equity team will now break into subcommittees to really focus on operationalizing the work in these six areas. They have already drafted immediate and long-term goals in each of the six areas to get us started, hold us accountable, right? Make this work concrete. I did want to uplift that one area, a seventh area, if you will, has consistently come up and came up very recently as we took a look, a deeper dive at some staff and student demographic data to to compare where we were disproportionate. And so hiring, which you can't talk about without talking about retention and leadership development, is a palpable area of need in the eyes of the district equity team. And so look for more on that. They are working on some more fleshed out plans, but I think sort of a stem to stern approach of how to support the diversification of our staff, but also really asking the question, why would black, indigenous, folks of color, LGBTQ folks, disabled folks want to come and work in White Plains? How do they see this district as a place where they can come and work and lead and thrive, right, in their careers? And so the district equity team wanted to uplift that as yet another area that has been really significantly important in their work, partially because of their commitment to analyzing disaggregated data. So we have taken a number of data dives into local data for White Plains and want the data to drive some of our decision-making in terms of setting short and long-term goals. And so take a look for more on that and also how the team sets some goalposts in terms of hopes that they have to see things move. The data tells one story, want to look at complex notions, and we're quite aware that the numbers we see on charts and graphs are people. And they are the people that we serve. And so we are looking for the ways that we can shift the climate and experience for those folks, for all of our young people. Each of the buildings will share these six recommendation areas with staff and and help staff to unpack where they feel areas of strength, where they see opportunities for growth, so that there is a system-wide conversation as a part of this work. Obviously, continued updates will come to you all on the board. And there is also a palpable hope from the district-wide committee for the board, specifically to have opportunities for training and ongoing engagement in the gatekeeping roles that you sit in, but also the lens that you apply to policy and practice analysis as a part of the work that y'all do. So with that being said, that's the taste of it. And I just really see this as the moment in time where White Plains can really embody this overall commitment, this idea that we're moving beyond aspiration and mission and vision, out of theory into practice, and what it will mean to craft a climate where young people can be served. Their full and whole selves in terms of race, ethnicity, language, country of origin, gender, sexuality, ability, socioeconomics, religion, all those pieces that make us up who we are. But being really conscious that particularly in this moment in time, race is the hardest identity for us to navigate as adults, as a community, as a county, as a country. And so how can we hold ourselves intentionally accountable to our commitments to equity and racial justice? So I thank you so much for the opportunity to to just share a little bit of how I was able to facilitate the work with this group.
Thank you so much, Natalie, and thank you, Debbie. And a huge thank you to our committee members who shared this evening. I know it is not easy to come out to, well, it's a little easier via Zoom, but it's definitely not easy to come out to a Board of Education meeting and and share, you know, your personal feelings and be somewhat vulnerable as well. You know, White Plains has a tremendous history of of work toward equity. And whether it be voluntarily desegregating back in the 60s, whether it be making sure that our children have access to transportation regardless of where they are in the city, whether it be leveling our elementary schools and moving away from the typical and prototypical neighborhood schools, a movement that we see taking place all throughout the nation right now and folks, you know, tapping White Plains to find out how that works. And these are, these are steps that have been in the history and part of the fabric of our community. This work, I call it forever work. And anyone who engages with children in classrooms and recognizes their uniqueness and 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 the need for all of us who work with children to to truly recognize how unique they are and support them for who they are. And making sure that our children can identify themselves, not just in the curriculum, but also in the faces of the folks who they work with every day, making sure that they feel safe and secure regardless of what kind of difficulty or tumult is taking place outside in the greater world. We 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 are committed to this work, and I just want to thank everyone who's who's participated in this. And this foundation that was laid many, many years before us and we continue to build upon now will continue even after we are gone. And I think that's one of the things that makes White Plains a special place and the efforts and the commitment of of all of the folks within our educational community, starting with the Board of Education, is is something that I think is truly special. I'm grateful for it. I think it's going to strengthen our district. You know, this is not a program. It's not something that you buy out of a box and implement. This is a cultural expectation. It's how we do things. One need only read our mission. And and one cannot deny that White Plains is about all children. And so really focusing our efforts and making sure that we are following that model of continuous improvement, engaging in the challenging conversations, looking at ourselves in the mirror, I do it every day, and saying, is this the best thing for all children? How will this decision impact our kids? This is what's going to continue to elevate us and, in the end, elevate our children, and that's why we're here. You know, so one of the things I always say is I love that our board meetings focus conversations on kids and not on adults. Think about that for a minute, right? We're a school board, we had a school board meeting, but if you ever watch them, a lot of times they're focused on adult issues, not in White Plains. And that's something that brings me great pride. And again, just thank you to everybody. To the Board of Education, we do have draft policy that will be going to the Board of Education Policy Committee for initial review, and then, of course, that policy as it would in a normal transaction. We'll go to the Board of Education for first reading and then consideration and potential second reading and adoption. That'll be coming in the next several meetings. I do want to just turn over the microphone. I know President Eller has has some comments, and then certainly any of the other trustees.
Thank you, Dr. Rick. I just wanted to really say to Natalie, as a facilitator, it it just doesn't get better than Natalie. This work took place during a lot of social unrest. The pandemic wound large. And Natalie facilitated in a way that enabled us to express our hurt and have difficult conversations, but be able to convene and do this very important work. So I want to say thank you for that, Natalie, and and I agree with you. This is a journey. It's not a destination. From the beginning, you held us accountable, and I appreciated that. And we are all accountable. Everyone's accountable and playing a role to ensure equitable practice. Thank you very much, Natalie.
We are going to embark on some difficult and challenging questions and conversations, but it was reassuring to hear from so many stakeholders. And I know the question was brought up in the chat in regards to engaging families beyond people involved in the and I and I know we're very early in on in this process, but engaging the families in conversations at the school building. So I know we have a lot of work to do at the district level, at the school level, and then, you know, and then to offer that to the families. But I want that, you know, to remain on our radar as well as to engage them in these conversations. And I know we are a few, but, you know, generally out to the majority of the folks in the in the community. But thank you for an excellent presentation as well.
And I could say too, thank you to the committee members and to Natalie for this important work. Some things that really stood out. This work, you know, it's about making our kids feel safe and inclusive and welcoming. And that's certainly what we would want for all of our kids in our schools, and that's important. And for kids that don't feel that way, that's our work, and that's why it's so important to make sure that that we do those things. I mean, those are just three things that really, that really struck with me. We know it can be hard. We know it can be uncomfortable. But I want to, I, you know, for me, I guess, my 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 north star is we want our schools to be safe, inclusive, and welcoming for our students. We want to make sure that this isn't a game of takeaway. This is a game of making sure that our students and our children get what they need to get to have a great experience in White Plains. And, you know, a rising tide rises all boats, and it's important that we do that. And we want to make sure we take care of all of our students.
And I would like to say that I thought the presentation was incredibly excellent. I was most interested in our student leaders, of course, because they're our future. The equity that they learn about and they understand is what they will bring and hopefully bring to a bet better than what they inherited in terms of our society currently. I was particularly interested in it as it's being done on the school board level and school level because I'm very much involved with the Equity Committee at my medical group. And we're handling and dealing with some of these very same issues. But the thought that having the kids involved in it and their perspective is so important because they will bring this to the future for us.
I just want to say that having been serving on the district equity team has been a privilege and an honor. And, you know, people have, I can't speak any better than anyone else has spoken. I mean, I'm really, you know, amazed by how beautifully everyone has presented here. It has truly been an honor to work with the members of the team. The commitment, the energy, the voices. It's it's been, everyone's been brilliant, the students, the staff, community members. And, you know, we talk a lot about, you know, it's it's not just having good intention, it's impact. And so I know that we are so cognizant of the need to have impact and to turn words into action. And, as I said, the energy and the commitment of this group to now disseminate this further into the buildings, into the wider community is a commitment that that we all share. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, am I on? Can you hear me? Am I on, Cheryl?
You're good.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you to Natalie. I didn't have the opportunity to sit down on the community, on the committee, and I wanted to thank everybody on the committee, you know, for a very long time in White Plains. We have talked about diversity. We have spoken about how we embrace and celebrate diversity. But clearly, like the rest of society and across the country, there are some very deep-seated old issues that need to be talked about. These are uncomfortable conversations. But if we really want to come together as a nation and be the country that we say that we are, then we need to have these conversations. We need to get uncomfortable because that's okay, and then move forward together. So I want to really thank the committee for starting the conversation.
And then move forward together. So I want to really thank the committee for starting the conversation. But it's going to be up to all of us. To do some deep dives internally, individually. And then to come together and move forward collectively. As a community that could really be a shining star for the rest of the country.
I also wanted to thank Natalie, um, having served on the committee. Um, it, it. It, I realized how challenging this work was and, and will continue to be. Um, it's very easy for us to all say. How much we love having our children in a diverse community. Um, but it's another thing to truly understand what that word means. And it's not diversity just in race, um, or, or just in, um. Nation of, of, you know, origin, um, it's, it's in abilities, it's in socioeconomics, it's in. Um. Uh, special education and language and so many other things and. I found that the most challenging part of this was actually. Some of the work that we did looking at, um, some of the different film clips and. Actually sitting through a lot of what was going on during the pandemic. A lot of the Zoom bombing. We spent several sessions just talking. Um, about people and what they were experiencing and what they were feeling. And it, it was definitely eye opening. To think that you're a person who understands. And, and who, who truly feels and sees what's going on. And then to sit in the room with people who experience things so very differently. Um, Natalie was an amazing facilitator. She kept us on track. She kept us moving forward and, um, I look forward to bringing this work to. A conclusion with our team, but also. To spread it now into the building levels and into the community levels. Thank you so much Natalie and everyone who served on the district team.
Thank you so much, everybody. I really appreciate it. Again. Um, thanks to all the committee members who came this evening. Uh, there were many in the audience that were here for supporting. Their colleagues who didn't speak. So thanks to all of you. Uh, for all of your hard work and the work that you're going to continue to do, um, as we, uh, move forward here. Okay, I'm going to transition now, uh, to this evening, of course, uh, is the, the budget adoption and I have just 65 slides to, to walk. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Uh, people already started to jump out. I'm only kidding. Um, but I do want to just draw your attention to a few things. Now, as a reminder, all of these budget presentations, this one included. Are available to you. They're on the district's website. Um, they're, they're on Facebook page. They're, they're everywhere. Um, and certainly, uh, as always, you can reach out to us if you have any questions about anything. Um, really what I want to, where I want to bring you is. To. The overall, um, and I'm going to ask, uh, Dr. Vicaro Tysh also to jump in just in case I miss anything. The overall proposed budget this year. Um, as, as you know, for those of you who have been part of, uh, these presentations. Is far below the maximum allowable, uh, tax levy and that was certainly purposeful. Uh, we have, uh, we, we completely and totally understand and respect the challenges associated with the pandemic over the last year. And we wanted to make every effort that we possibly could to bring a proposed budget forward. That not only supports all of the programming that our children presently enjoy. Everything academic, extracurricular and the arts, but also moves the programming forward. So this is not a budget where we're standing stagnant. Um, this is a budget that continues to move the district forward and still comes in far below the 3.88%. That the tax cap, cap would allow us this year. This year we're recommending 1.23% increase. It's a reduction budget to budget, uh, year to year. When you take a look and we were able to do that. By, by shifting the costs, uh, that we had in last year's, uh, proposed and then adopted. And then approved budget, um, and holding off on some of those expenditures. Uh, because we wanted to make sure that our program was solid. And that we were preserving the integrity of the overall organizational program as we moved through the pandemic. Nothing was guaranteed. And certainly even in the future, nothing is guaranteed. We feel very, very good about this budget because it supports our core values and our mission as well as our strategic plan. And all of our children's programming. But at the same time. It allows the district to retain the, the solid. Financial footing, um, that we have enjoyed because of the board's careful planning over the years. Um, moving into the next academic year. Now, the first question that, that some, somebody might ask is Joe, what does that mean? To, for me, the average, uh, assessed homeowner in White Plains, what's my, what's my monthly increase look like? Well, on the average, it's about $11. Um, so we're able to bring the district forward and, uh, stay on, well underneath the tax cap. Um, and, and that is something that for me is, is very, very exciting. Um, now some other questions that might come up, well, well, you know, we just heard about, um, state aid increases. How is that going to impact the district? And what about the federal dollars associated with the American Rescue Act? How is that going to all play out? So great questions. The first question in terms of, of the state aid. We were thrilled to see that White Plains is finally receiving more of White Plains' dollars to support White Plains' children. That's outstanding. That came with a lot of effort and advocacy on behalf of, and again, thanks to the board, on behalf of the, the Board of Education. As well as our team members here in the district, um, and our elected officials. So that's great news. Now. It is suggested and proposed that those increases will continue year over year. For the next three years. I would, uh, just put a war, again, conservative word of caution. That we really can't guarantee anything. Other than what's proposed this year. So we're going to continue to be very conservative in our planning. Um, as, as we, as we look to the future and remember, you know, when we're thinking about budgets and we're thinking about spending plans. It's, it's not a singular, you know, one year. We're looking one, three, five, seven down the line. Um, to try and predict as much as we possibly can. Uh, where we're going to see ourselves in the future. So we don't fall into, uh, challenging times where we're, we're going against our core values of preserving the program. Um, in terms of the federal. American Rescue Act dollars, uh, as you know, huge, huge support from the federal government. Which, uh, of course we are thrilled to see that in the White Plains City School District. And we are going to approach this very, very carefully, strategically, and dare I say, being an educator, smart. Uh, we want to make sure that we utilize these dollars because they're one-time only dollars, right? And that's really important. You can't take these dollars. And supplant what, what's in, um, the general budget. This is separate and apart from that. And these dollars will dissipate. When you spend them once, they're gone. So you can't start hiring people. You can't do things that have recurring costs. So you need to figure out the way in which you can utilize them so that you're going to get literally. The best bang for your buck as long as possible. And that's what we intend to do. We have a master plan that's in place. Um, we, we know that we have capital, um, endeavors that we can undertake. And what we plan to do is come together, uh, with a stakeholder group to take a look at some of our options. Of course, there are strings attached to the funding. 20% of that must be held back, uh, to, to support student learning. Um, or, you know, those types of things are all part of that calculus. Uh, but we will then come forward to the Board of Education with recommendations. Uh, for how those funds could be used within the district again, um, to provide longevity, um, for this infusion. And, uh, we, we have some, some ideas that are in the hopper right now and we'll be coming to you with that. But that's important to just make that distinction. Um, between the general budget. And the American Rescue Act, because I know that there, there, there may have been, um, because it is confusing. Um, some confusion out there in the world on how, how those dollars factor into the budget process. And did I capture that?
We did, Dr. Rick. Um, and even, um, the State Controller has come out and really has said that those federal monies are going to be accounted for in a separate. Funds, completely separate and apart from the general operating fund. And I would just also further say that in addition to holding on the initiatives for 2021, which helped reduce our overall budget. That we also through our long range planning and fund balance projections. Are, um, looking to use those, uh, savings that occurred during the year and use them to. Uh, fund our debt service going out for the next five years. And that's why. Uh, we're going to transfer monies over into the debt service reserve fund and then 2.1 million each year. Through 25, 26 will be used to reduce our capital tax levy, thereby reducing the tax levy burden to our taxpayers. Um, and this has been reviewed with, you know, not only our auditors, both last year and again. Uh, this year, but with legal counsel in the State Controller's office. So we think it's a smart way to continue to help alleviate that tax burden.
Thanks, Ann. Does anybody, uh, trustee, any, any of the, the Board of Education members have any questions? I, I, I forgive me. I know you've seen this a thousand times. Uh, just, just making sure.
I think the state budget produced something that really none of us had been expecting. And, uh. It'll be very interesting to see how that, those federal dollars go that you just talked about and exciting to see. How those one-time dollars will be spent in the upcoming months. I know. Everyone's working hard at putting plans together and seeing how that works out because. There are some requirements on, on how that, on, some of those monies actually have to be used. For, uh, for some of the slide that took place, uh, during the pandemic. I think 20% of one of those buckets of money. So. Uh, more information is becoming available every day. I, I certainly know that and. I think that's really, really important. With the other dollars, I think it's great that we're taking a go slow approach. And that you mentioned a one, three, five, seven year outlook because really. We're looking at the impact on our students' budgets and, and we don't want to have. Uh, a budget with peaks and valleys where there's, where we're adding things and we're taking things away, um. And having this, uh, sustainability. And consistency is really important to our students. And, uh, I know there was a lot of thought going into establishing this tax levy and going below the levy. And the community has always been very supportive historically. Uh, in, in, uh, in moving forward with the tax increases. So I think this is one of those times where. Uh, you're listening to the administration. There's a good recommendation and, uh, and thank you for that. And, uh, thank you to the members of the Finance Committee, uh, who also help, uh, form those recommendations because not only are their board members. Uh, on that Finance Committee, their community members on the Finance Committee too. And, uh, we certainly appreciate their, uh. Their input and, and it's very, you know, it's taken and it's listened to by all. So thank you to them.
Thanks, Mr. Rittie. Yeah, absolutely. And thank you to Dr. Stein and, and the Finance Committee. I mean, they, you know, hours and hours of work and development and then going back to the drawing board. You know, when we have these changes that come up too. So, um, just really appreciative again, you know, an example. Of that collaborative spirit and that collaborative nature, uh, in, in White Plains. And this is a proposed budget in my, in my estimation, um, that, that we can. Again, be very proud of because while we are of course spending. Um, 80%, almost 80% of, of the, the budget in the classroom, right? In programming. Um, with our children, that's where you want to be. Uh, we're, we're also, as you mentioned, Jim, um, really taking a very, very scalpel-like approach. Um, to making sure that we're, we're using as much as we can to reduce the burden on the taxpayer. Um, at the same time, while also not setting the district up. Um, for, you know, some of the, the, the challenges that occur with, with accounting tricks like structural deficits. And we're very, very proud that in White Plains, we are moving away. You know, we've moved away from utilizing, uh, year-to-year fund balance to support programming. And, and that, that puts us in a very, very solid and enviable position because you don't run a structural deficit. Of which you need to be concerned about, um, on an annual fiscal basis.
Joe, if I could just add, the pandemic forced us to make a lot of changes in terms of the budget and presentation to the board. And I just, I put a link to the, um, the website. That, uh, Ann, or I'm not sure who put together, but. With the information about school budgets in 60 seconds, there's the slideshow that you did. I mean, the, the budget is, is just all over that website and so many resources alone. Um, from how to get an absentee ballot to how to vote, where to vote, uh, and. All the information that we've been discussing over the course of the last, I guess, nine months, uh, in regard to this budget is, is all right there. So I'm gonna. Just put it in the chat for everybody.
Thank, thank you for doing that. Yeah, we did. And you can listen to me talk about the budget in 20 minutes or less and you could hear it in Spanish and we, we're really trying to do. Everything, everything we possibly can to get that communication piece out, uh, all throughout the community. Thanks so much, Dr. Tisa.
Joe, I, I also want to just highlight the confluence of our equity work. With the infusion of funding that we've received. And the lens that, you know, through which we view our commitments. And, um, you know, sort of our, our goals and how, um. How our priorities, uh, are reflected in how we're going to be spending our money.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Not 64 slides. Thank you very much, everyone. That concludes my superintendent's report. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to our summary of action items now. We have summary action items number four through eight. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Dr. Ricka?
Yes, I'm back. Uh, I would like to draw your attention to, um, uh, four, item four B. Uh, donations with, we are grateful for these generous donations. Two easels from Karen Roussev, uh, for the high school art department. $500 from the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools for the midnight club run, uh, run club, sorry, at the high school. Gift cards from Lorraine Travado Cantori to support PBIS at Rochambeau. A thousand masks from the Rossi Family Foundation through the Rotary Club and the Million Mask Challenge. $500 from Mr. and Mrs. Kevin Brown and $150 for, from Westchester Elite LLC. Uh, for the Brown Family Memorial Scholarship. $1,000 from Mr. and Mrs. Stephen Greenstein, $500. From Sari Wax and Nathan Rosenblatt and $100 from, from the Songwriters Club for the Ydan Greenstein Memorial Music Scholarship. And $5,000 from the Kurtz Family Fund to the Margaret L. Kurtz Memorial Scholarship Fund. We are grateful for all of those very generous donations. Thank you to all.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Just one quick item on item eight. On item eight, I know we talked about, uh, some of these transfers and, and transfers to debt service fund and accrued liability. I think Dr. Cartage. Went through it already. Uh, you mentioned that all of these have been vetted through our external auditors. So we're all, we're all pointed in the right direction, correct?
Correct. We, we, uh, reviewed it last year and this year with our external auditors and also legal counsel and. Actually the Office of the State Controller because they did a deep dive into our long range planning and. And looking at our, our, our fund balance projections in that process. So, um, the goal is to continue. To, when we have one-time only funds, to be able to, you know. Take those monies, put them in the debt service reserve where they cannot be used other than to pay down debt. Um, and that really in the end is the goal is to continue to save taxpayer dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we're going to move to our individual items. The first one is the recommended adoption. Of the proposed budget for the 2021 through 2022 school year. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you so much again to the Finance Committee, um, for just everything that you've done to bring this. To us and, um, to Dr. Vicaro Tysh and her staff as well. Thank you so much. Next, we have the, um. Recommended appro- approval of the abolishment of certain positions. Created as part of the 2020 through 2021 adopted budget. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Questions? I don't know, um, uh, Dr. Tysh and Joe, if you wanted to comment on that, um, the abolishment of positions.
So as we had talked about, uh, during the presentation that the board and, and the administration took decisive steps in holding on those new initiatives for 2021. So this is the accounting or the transaction of officially removing. Those positions from our inventory of positions and then the following, um, resolution is. Then reflecting from that point, what minor changes there are for 21, 22 in, in positions.
So those were unfilled positions.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you.
So we're not taking away from anything that was already existing.
Exactly. These were, these were held, not filled positions. And that's what helped reduce our overall budget for 21, 22.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the, uh, uh, recommended approval of the establishment. Next, we have the recommended approval of the establishment slash abolishment of positions as part of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two adopted budget, as per the comments from Dr. Taisch. May I have a moment, a motion?
So moved.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we're moving on to the recommended approval of the resignation of Robert Janowitz, Assistant Principal of Mamarone Avenue School effective at the close of business on April twelfth, twenty twenty one.
Absolutely.
May I have a second? Any questions? It all makes sense when we get to the next item. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the administrative appointment, the recommended approval of oh, yeah, the recommended approval of the administrative appointment of Robert Janowitz, who was replacing Eileen Maguire as principal of Mamarone Avenue School. The probationary period is February first, twenty twenty one, through January thirty first, twenty twenty four. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, Dr. Rick. I think Mr. Janowitz is with us. I don't know if you have any comments or if Mr. Janowitz has any comments that he'd like to bring.
Well, you know, if offered, I'll always make a comment. I I am just absolutely thrilled and thank you to the the Board of Education for your your support and your approval. Thank you to the Search Committee, led by Mr. Pepper and and all of the stakeholders who participated in that. I'd like to thank Mr. Janowitz for stepping in and stepping up and and serving in the interim capacity during the search process. And of course, Mr. Spadafino, who's here with us this evening as well, and supporting him as Assistant Principal. This is the culmination of of a great deal of work and effort. And Mr. Janowitz has had a very long and successful relationship here with us in White Plains. This is an outstanding step. I called Rob last week, right before the weekend, and I said, hey, enjoy this, enjoy the weekend, celebrate, because Monday, it's just back to work, and now you're one of my principals. So, you know, in all seriousness, though, Rob, we we're thrilled. It's it's a it's a pleasure to work with you. We know how much you mean to the MAS community and how inspiring you are to our children. So it is absolutely a pleasure and I and I look forward to working with you in this capacity and supporting you in every way I possibly can. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Rick. I just want to take a moment and thank the Board of Education, the Cabinet, MAS, our community, and White Plains. I am humbled and honored to continue to serve in this new capacity of Principal of Mamarone Avenue School. And you have two thousand percent of myself to give my very best to this community, and I am completely honored. And I just want to take a moment to thank all the past administrators and colleagues that I've worked with. It just, you know, sitting here, I'm reflecting on where I've been and where I am today. And I am incredibly grateful for all of my colleagues, friends, and MAS community and White Plains community. So thank you so much to everyone.
Congratulations, Rob.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move forward with our agenda. Next, we have the recommended approval of a new three year contract, a three year term employment agreement with Deborah Algarten, Assistant Superintendent for Special Education and People's Services. This is a three year term commencing July first, twenty twenty one, and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have the recommended approval of a new three year con, three year term employment agreement with Mr. Scott Pepper, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. It's a three year term commencing July first, twenty twenty one, and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I did want to also, first of all, I'd like to congratulate certainly my colleagues, Mr. Pepper and Dr. Hand, I I'm sorry, Ms. Algarten. And I I I can't really say enough, I don't think, about how supportive and truly spectacular the Cabinet members are and have been. This is a tremendous team, complementing each other's weaknesses, supporting each other's strengths. And thrilled. And again, congratulations to both of you. And thank you for your continued willingness to serve the children and the community of the White Plains City School District. I I truly appreciate it, and I enjoy working with you fifteen, sixteen hours a day. It's fantastic. I also wanted to draw our attention and congratulate Jataja Williams, who is a teaching assistant, receiving tenure this evening at Eastview, and Mrs. Lauren Monroe, who is our school psychologist at Ridgeway, who also received tenure this evening in Consent Agenda. Congratulations to both of you. Thank you for your commitment to our children. And all the best for many, many years of continued service and dedication to our Tigers. And thanks for choosing White Plains as as your home. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Rick. Next, we're going to move on to board discussion with our committee reports. We did have our HR committee. We met, as we usually do, but everything that is confidential, so we don't report in detail. Charlie, did you want to comment on curriculum or?
Yes, curriculum. That I had to step off a little early because of a situation with my grand dog. So I'm sure that Cheryl will pick up. But it was a very interesting meeting. We talked about our community partners that provide special rather pre K services and the services that we're developing through, that we're delivering through these partnerships, upgrading curriculum, and it's just and how this has all been open during the pandemic and what we've been able to provide and our what our partners have been able to provide. And it was a really very, very interesting meeting, and I'm sure Cheryl will have more to say about it.
Yeah, it's also amazing how the funding is used in a very creative way, really to get the full time slots that are so that are so needed for our students. The presentation was awesome, as usual. Really enjoy our curriculum meetings. Cheryl, I give you a moment to, if you wanted to add anything.
I'll just take a moment. So Jennifer Hammond King presented. And most of the time, we know her as, you know, P L A coordinator, right? For for our younger children. But she is also one of the co directors of the pre K, along with Gail Epstein, who is one of Rob's predecessors at at MAS. And so I do want to thank them, even though it is not an in house program that we have. We are very careful and very deliberate in choosing our partners, our community partners who run the program. And there are now five partners that we're going to be working with. And so there's real intention in 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 the curriculum and in how we provide professional development for the teachers. And it's 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 a really outstanding program, which leads into that continuum of, you know, pre K through twelve in our school district. And I guess the only other thing I'll add is we spoke about testing as well.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. The presentation, I agree, was awesome. Cheryl and Charlie, I really thoroughly enjoyed it. Thank you, Dr. Hand. And please convey our thanks to Jennifer Hammond King as well. Any other committee reports? I know Finance, we've seen the fruits of your labor tonight.
There's nothing that we, everything that we've done is out front there.
Thank you. Are there any other committee report outs? Okay. Next, we're going to move to adjournment. May I have a motion? And before I ask for the motion, thank you, everyone who attended tonight. Congratulations to everyone who received tenure, to Mr. Janowitz, to Ms. Algarten and and Mr. Pepper and and really.
And Lauren. And Lauren.
And Lauren, Lauren, yeah, and Lauren, everyone who received tenure. What a wonderful thing. And on behalf of the board, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. So without further ado, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night and be safe, everyone. Thank you so much for sharing this time.
Good night.
Thank you.